We have a bright future, so we claim that word as we move forward into 2017. And we ask that you just be with us and forgive us of our sins, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Yes, I'd like to recognize Senator Charles Colgan, who lost his life last week. If everybody could please pray with me. Dear Heavenly Father, today we thank you for the life of Senator Charles Colgan, who died January 3rd in hospice at age 90. Senator Colgan, who was elected in 1975, was the longest-serving member of the Virginia Senate, where he was known for his advocacy of the development of Prince William County, and for his steady-handed stewardship of state finances. He was a landmark figure not just in Prince William County, but the entire Commonwealth. He's a reminder of a more gentle and centrist era of Virginia politics. His passionate and bipartisan approach to getting things done should serve as an example for all of us as we continue the work he and so many undertook and passed forward to us. Lord, please give his family and friends the support they need during the grieving times ahead, and help us remember his dedication and spirit as we serve our community this year. Amen.
Pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In accordance with the Board's bylaw, Section 1-1, the first order of business is the election of the chairman. Once the nominations are complete, the Board will vote in the order in which the nominations were received. The floor is now open for nominations for the chairman.
I nominate Mr. Milde.
Second.
Are there any other nominations?
I nominate Mr. Cavalier.
Any other nominations? That nomination's closed. We'll vote on the first one first. Those in favor for Mr. Milde being the chairman, please vote. There we go, okay. 4-3. Mr. Milde, congratulations, you're now chair.
Thank you.
And if you would take over the meeting for the nominations of the vice chair, and then we'll, after that, maybe about 10 minutes, so we can make a seat adjustment.
Of course, thank you.
Thank you.
I'll open the floor for nominations for vice chair.
My name is Bomke.
Any other nominations? And I'll close the nominations. All of those in favor of Ms. Bomke as vice chair, please vote. Yes. Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, now we'll take a brief recess. That sounds good.
For 2, on the agenda is the Board meeting calendar needs to be adopted.
All right. So we're going to approve this? Any recommended changes?
Mr. Chairman, I can make a motion for R. 17-01.
Second.
Motion seconded.
It's normal order of business to go through each committee.
We're on the meeting schedule, right?
Number 2.
Number 2.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, correct, number 2 is the calendar.
Yep.
It's the Board's meeting dates.
Oh, R. 17-01, okay, that's R. 17-03, my apologies.
So, any discussion about the dates for upcoming meetings? All right, we're motioned and seconded, all in favor? I guess I don't have to call for a pose? All right, and that passes unanimously? Oh, cast your votes. Yeah, it is different. Thank you. All right, let's move to number 3. Bob, is this, I'll witness, right after this vote, we do the BZA?
I think it's after the 3rd item.
Hold on, let me get, I'm pulling this up. Okay, so this is our, kind of our heavy lifting, and we all have the Stafford County Committee listings in front of us? We're working off the same sheet of paper. Obviously, Marsha has X-ed out the pages that don't have any vacancies to appoint, and in turn, as we have highlighted, the ones that are expiring, so if anyone, unless someone disagrees, we'll just go through them one at a time, starting with the ADA Grievance Who do we have? Do we know if these appointees wish to be reinstated? What do we typically do? Just vote them back in without asking them?
Mr. Chairman, they do all wish to be reappointed.
All right, good. Then I'd entertain a motion to reappoint them. Do you want to do them one at a time? Is that what we typically do? Yeah, okay.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. On here, it says staff wishes to appoint one or two additional alternates. That's not included in the list? Okay, so we would do that at the next meeting? Okay.
Motion to approve the ADA Grievance Committee.
Second.
All right, all in favor, cast your votes.
Question. Marsha, did you contact Aston Houghton? Because it's my understanding that he moved to North Carolina a few months ago.
No, sir, I didn't speak with him directly. The staff contact for the ADA Committee had checked in these folks several weeks or months ago. We can follow up with him, though, to see if that's, if he's back in town periodically.
I'm almost certain he sold his house and moved to North Carolina.
We'll double-check with him then, sir, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend that we amend the motion to remove his name until further information is gathered regarding that individual.
I'll agree to that.
Okay, in the second, or please?
Yes.
That was you?
That was me.
All right, please cast your votes. Oops, here we go.
I hit one, yeah, thank you.
There we go. All right, on to Advisory Board for Law Enforcement Towing. Marsha, does everyone wish to be reappointed?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve, as listed.
Second.
All right, cast your votes.
Mr. Chairman, on succeeding ones, if you all want to just take a voice vote on these, that would be acceptable. It's your priority, Mr. Chairman, whatever you prefer to do. If you want to move things along, we could do that.
Thank you, yes.
Thank you.
All right, so that did pass, and we'll go on to Stafford County Committee for Advisory Board on Private Trespass.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, and that passes. Skip, PDR.
Can I make an amendment to AG PDR? My person has not been able to attend, and the chair, I believe, from the Rock Hill District, made a great recommendation that I actually blank that spot out, it might make it more visible to the community, and I might get some interest in it.
I'll entertain that motion.
So the motion would be to approve the AG PDR Committee and take out the George Washington member.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Sounds good. We move on to, it looks like we have, oh, this is BZA, Ernest Ackerman. And tell me again, Bob, this is, he wants to be reappointed?
Yes, Arnie does.
Okay, then I'll entertain that motion.
So move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that passes.
Chairman, I'm sorry for the interruption, but I believe on this one, we have a reso, because he's appointed by the Circuit Court. And that goes back to the, right after the background report, you'll see R. 17-02, so why don't you just go ahead and move that motion, and you'll be in order, I think.
Yeah, and Bob apprised me that, and I misunderstood him, so I'll, want to move?
Just trying to move and approve on R. 17-02.
17-02.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. We're on BZA, and that passes unanimously. We're going to keep going until we get to Civilian Military Community Relations Council. Let me know when you're there. All right. I assume you two would like to keep serving?
Please.
Please? All right, I'll entertain that motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations. And we're on to Community Policy and Management Team for At-Risk Youth Families. We have one vacancy, Laura Sellers. Would you like to continue?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, and that passes. We'll skip the next one, and we'll go to the Embry Mill Community Development Authority. Marsha, what do we know about them?
They've all been contacted and have all agreed to serve again.
Wonderful.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any, aye, any opposed? And that passes unanimously. And then Fire Prevention Code Board of Appeals. We have Gerald Haynes. Is he interested? Haynes interested? Okay, motion?
Second.
A motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, keep moving forward. FAMPO. I certainly would like to continue to stay on. I don't think Anthony is interested in driving up to Fredericksburg. Are we going to, what are we going to do in the interim? Should we leave it empty, and, or maybe, I don't, I would have, I would put Keith there if I thought he was going to be back in a month.
Mr. Chairman, why don't we, sorry, Mike, why don't we put Mike Smith on there?
I'd only want it to be a placeholder, I-
Until the county administrator gets here.
Yeah, yes.
I'm sure he would appreciate it, just being a placeholder.
You might have one meeting or two meetings. Okay, without-
And I would like to continue to serve on FAMPO.
Okay, and as would I.
So it sounds like, it sounds like a motion is in order for the slate as it currently exists with the substitution of Mike Smith?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? All right, on to, it's not that bad, Mike. FRA. Jack and Meg, are you still interested in staying on there?
Yes.
I'm good.
Motion for approval?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Congratulations. GWRC.
I'd like to stay on that.
Good, and I'd like to-
I'm willing to continue to serve.
I'm willing to continue as an alternate, who has to come.
Same here.
And Bob, all right, so I have a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? All right, thank you. Skip, over to Industrial Development Authority of Stafford County in Stanton, where Bob and I both kind of got our, we both did this at one point, before we were elected. I haven't spoken to Mike Lovett.
I did, and he's willing to be reappointed.
Good, so I entertain a motion to-
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? All right, over to the OPEB, Local Finance Board. Meg?
I'm willing to serve unless somebody else would like to be considered.
All right.
So move.
Second.
All right, moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? All right, congratulations again, and then the Military Affairs Council.
I'm willing to allow someone else to serve if they wish to.
What day is it?
I say, it used to be, was it quarterly? It's kind of at the end of the day, like at 3:00 sometime during the week.
Yeah, around the 3, 4 o'clock timeframe.
Yeah.
I believe it's the 4th Thursday of the month at 3:30 at the Chamber Office, that's what it used to be.
Yeah.
3:30, oh, I think, at the Office on Eve.
What day, I'm sorry?
I think it's Thursdays, yeah.
That would be right before our, but it's, which Thursday? Before, so it doesn't interfere with PRTC. You've been really strong on that.
I know, I just, but it's so far down there, I will continue to serve if no one else wants it. I tried.
I'd like for you to stay unless somebody else wants it.
I mean, I'm closer to the city, if you-
I am okay with that.
You want to do it?
Okay, and it's the 4th Thursday?
At 3:30.
Every quarter.
Oh, okay, I can do that.
Yeah.
All right, then we'll replace Wendy with Meg there.
So a motion for, you going to stay alternate?
I can, but I do have a conflict, that's usually when Office on Eve is-
Wendy, would you like to maybe do the alternate?
I will stay as the alternate.
All right, wonderful. Okay, now, I need a motion.
Okay, so a motion for Ms. Bomke as the primary, and Ms. Mauer as the alternate.
Yep.
Second, anywhere?
Second.
Motioned and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? All right, thank you. And then Parks and Recreation Commission, we have only Melissa Ayers, who is-
They will be appointing someone at their next upcoming meeting, and they'll let me know who that is.
Sounds good. We'll come back to that in future. All right, what's next? Looks like the Potomac Watershed Roundtable. Meg, are you happy to continue on?
Which roundtable?
Potomac Watershed.
Oh, sure.
It's a quarterly on Fridays.
Sure.
She actually enjoys this stuff.
It's not bad.
She called me a couple times, like, oh, okay.
I've learned a lot, yes.
They meet in interesting places.
Yes, it's, always changes, I'll continue.
Good, and I'll stay on as alternate. So I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motioned and seconded, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? All right, and on to the Rappahannock Area Aging, Agency on Aging. Gary?
I'll stay on.
And do we know if Linda wants to stay on?
I spoke with Ms. Musselman, she's willing to be reappointed.
Perfect, I'll entertain a motion.
Second.
Motioned and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, any opposed? All right, let's skip a few and get to the Rappahannock Community Criminal Justice Board. Again, we have a situation where this was Anthony's spot. Should we leave it vacant?
Mr. Chairman, do we know when that meets? What is that?
That's a meeting that actually Mr. Romanello rarely attended. It was something that each locality is required to have a county administrator listed, but their meetings are very infrequent, and not on a regular schedule.
If required-
That was required in county administration.
Should we leave it vacant, or put Doug in there temporarily, and then replace him?
This is fine.
So move.
All right.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Thank you, Doug. Rappahannock Juvenile Detention Commission, wow, 2 vacancies there, what's our thought there? Tell us about that meeting.
What I would suggest, Mr. Chairman, on that one, is we put Andrea Light, replace Nancy Collins in the budget, so she would be the choice on that, and then at this time, I would go ahead and put, I'll be the county administrator, then Tom, usually what happens is one or the other goes.
Perfect.
Not both of us usually go.
So you and Andrea.
Motion for Ms. Light and Mr. Barnes?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? All right, that passes. And the Rappahannock Regional Criminal Justice Academy, does the sheriff want to continue on? Yep, on, motion?
Motion for approval?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay, that passes. Rappahannock Regional Jail Authority Board.
Again, the recommendations I would make would be Andrea Light instead of Nancy Collins, and then I will stay on it, and after I leave, Tom will go on it.
Sounds good.
So move.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? And that passes. Okay, the R Board, I am, of course, will stay on.
I'd like to give my seat up.
It's not as bad as it sounds.
Yes, it is.
No, it's not. And it's become profitable.
Worse than it sounds.
My problem is the time of the day of the meeting.
Come on, you guys, Gary, come on.
I do my time.
Yeah, I've been on there for 12, this will be my 12th year. I'll go it alone, until we find someone, but someone-
Chairman, I'll go on the R Board.
Thank you, Mar.
I'll do it if you-
Regent, we all go on the R Board.
But check the times of meetings.
We can set the times, anytime, I like to have the meetings in the morning on it, they like to have them on Wednesdays, and it doesn't matter which Wednesday, and it's once every couple of months, they don't have a set schedule, it depends on how often we need to meet, but we can move them to any time that satisfies you. You okay with that?
That's fine.
All right, good.
So move.
Second.
All right, moved and seconded, and as far as the, want to leave the administrator's spot open, or do you want to temporarily serve on the R Board?
I think right now, we'll leave it open.
Okay, so we're moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? All right. Rappahannock River Basin Commission, Meg and Rob.
I'll stay.
All right.
Unless somebody else really wants it.
I don't even know what you do. Anyone else really want it? Okay, motion?
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? All right, that passes. Let's go to Telecommunications Commission. Looks like everybody is up for reappointment, Marsha.
Except for Katie Helslawler, she's decided she did not want to be reappointed.
Okay, and that would be George Washington. Do you have someone in mind?
I have a name, but I don't have a Board Bank app yet.
Okay, well, leave that open, and then-
Stafford Tech and Research.
Okay, we'll go back to that in a minute, I didn't notice I skipped it. The, okay, so what about the county administrator's spot? Do you want to leave it open again?
Yeah, or his designee, I think we just put county administrator or his designee.
So we will, we'll fill it with you or your designee?
Right, right.
All right, so we have the slate as written, except for you'll fill in for, or your designee for Anthony's spot, and we'll wait and see what happens with, for an appointee and a bank for an application for George Washington.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Second. Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? All right, I don't, by the way, I don't, in my package, I don't have the-
Stafford Tech and Research.
Oh, it's crossed out with an X.
It's because the terms don't expire.
Oh, okay.
So are we going to-
We could just make a change whenever we wanted, but there's no, there's no set time we have to do.
Okay, well, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Cavalier, since this is in his district, he's expressed an interest to serve on this committee, and so I will withdraw my seat for that, or relinquish my seat appointment, however you wish to. So I would like to make a motion to replace myself with Mr. Cavalier.
Second.
Motion and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? All right, thank you, Jack. Now, we're going to skip past telecommunications, and go to the Thurman Brisbane Center. Is that still, I'm not even sure what's going on with that.
They're still open, Ms. Kraus is willing to be reappointed.
It still exists, and she still wants to do it.
So move.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations again. Transportation Impact Fee Boards, I have a yellow spot and an X.
Motion, yeah, motion this one.
Just for Anthony, do we want to appoint someone temporarily, and tell him the county administrator?
This is one of those county administrator or designee, right?
Yeah.
Same thing, me and I'll put a designee.
So entertain a motion to put Doug Barnes in there.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I would make the recommendation that we put county administrator or his, or his designee.
Okay.
It just makes it easier, so we don't have to revisit it.
Yes, and just for the sake of discussion, then, they always say county administrator, do we-
Sometimes they don't.
I mean, when they, when they do, do we need to actually vote to put in the county administrator? No. Okay, so we don't really need to vote on this?
Not really.
Okay.
All right.
Then I withdraw my motion.
Okay. All right, Utilities Commission, looks like we just have a vacancy in Hartwood, Gary?
I do not have a candidate at this time.
All right, then I think we're good to go there. Wetlands Chesapeake Bay Board, we have, oh, Ben, I don't know about Mary, is it Mary or Marty?
It's Mary Rust and Ben Rudicilla, both, I've spoken to both, and they want to be reappointed.
And we're still looking for at-large, we have 2 spots open there. If anyone knows anyone with an interest in Wetlands, it's not a bad board. How often do they meet? Monthly? All right, entertain a motion.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay. Workforce Investment Board.
Mr. Griffin doesn't want to be reappointed, is that what I'm reading?
I had not gotten a response to any of my inquiries to Mr. Griffin, and he had not attended a meeting in the past year, according to the folks at the Workforce Investment Board.
When are those meetings held?
I'm sorry, I don't know, I'll have to look that up and get that back to you.
Depending on time and place of meeting, I would be interested in that.
Do you want to revisit it, or do you want to go ahead and take a gamble?
It's a 4-year commitment, by the way, so, even if you go do other things, you're still on there.
Well, if I need to resign, I will, I will go ahead and, and serve at this juncture.
So I'll entertain a motion to replace Wendy.
So move.
Oh, sorry.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? All right, is that it? All right. Where does that put us on the agenda? Are we down to legislative?
Legislative appointments.
Appointments to the board?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, standing committees. We'll just take them one by one, I passed out kind of a history, and the last page of the history shows you who's on there now. We'll start with the Bylaws Committee, since it's on top. Right now, we have Meg and Bob. How do you feel about staying on?
If somebody wants to do it, that's fine, I think I've been stuck on that for 4 or 5 years, so.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to serve on that, if possible.
That'd be great.
And I'm willing to give up my seat if somebody else would like to have that spot, or I could stay on with Gary.
Who else would like to be on there?
I'll be on with Gary.
All right, so Gary and Jack. And do we need to, we vote on these or we just appoint?
Motion to approve.
Yep, so move. Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Thank you, guys. There's a, it's, I don't know when I would squeeze this in, so I'll squeeze it in right now. A couple of board members have shown an interest in, speaking of bylaws committees, an interest in the, the old code of con, code of performance that we had signed by, by all the board members a couple of different times over the last, not recently, I think that 2012 was the most recent. I just wanna bring it up and put, let you know we're gonna have it on for discussion in a meeting soon, either the next meeting or the one after that, and see if you guys are interested in signing your names. There certainly hasn't been any problem with any of these issues, so I wouldn't, I'm not implying that we need to change our way we're acting, but it's a good, a good list of kind of rules and I'd like to consider it. Any problem with that?
Nope.
Good. Okay, let's go to Community and Economic Development.
I would like to continue serving on that board.
Bob and Gary?
I'm good.
Yeah, I'm good.
All right, entertain a motion.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Great, thanks. Finance Audit and Budget.
I would like to continue serving on that committee.
As would I.
I would like to serve on that committee for the first time.
You said that last year. And Jack?
I, I would like to remain on it.
Well, that puts us with four people. So, we'll take them-
I would like to say, am I allowed to make a comment?
Absolutely.
Okay. I've been on the board for three years and I've been on public safety and some other very interesting committees, but I've never had an opportunity to serve on infrastructure, kinda the big ones I consider, economic development, finance, and infrastructure. So I'd really like to serve on finance and budget this year, if possible.
Mr. Chairman, you have four under consideration, the bylaws permit only three.
Understood, I'm gonna take them one at a time, we're gonna vote, just take them in order. I'm gonna take them in that order, so the order you're gonna, we're gonna be voting is gonna be Jack Cavalier, Wendy Mauer, Bob Thomas, and Meg Baumke. I'll start with Jack, I'll entertain a motion to-
So move.
Keep Meg. All in favor for Jack?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Should we don't, do we wanna go to a count on this? Should we go back to our clickers or do you wanna just do a roll call?
I think as long as you find if you've got the rule of four, in fact, you're, you're good to go.
All right. Okay. I'll entertain a motion for Wendy Mauer.
So moved.
Moved and seconded for Wendy. All in favor of Wendy, vote aye.
Aye.
All opposed to Wendy, vote no.
No.
Nay. So I need to show a hands, who's in favor of Wendy? We have four to three. Wendy is on there. All right, Bob Thomas. I need a motion.
So move.
Second.
Second.
All right, all in favor of Bob, vote aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? We have one opposition, all right, that carries it, I think, Meg, that pushes you out of contention.
Yes, it does.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry about that. All right.
Easy math.
Easy math. You're getting closer. Public Safety. Is that our next on our list?
Infrastructure.
Infrastructure.
Yeah, infrastructure. All right, so as it's, of course, I would love to stay on infrastructure for a litany of reasons. Jack, are you willing to continue on there?
Yes.
And Laura?
Yeah, I am.
And are there any other people who'd like to serve or nominees?
I would like to, I would like to serve on infrastructure.
All right, I'll fall on infrastructure.
All right.
Thank you, Laura.
That was easy. Any others? I'll take, I'll entertain a motion for the slate with Jack Cavalier, myself, and Meg Baumke.
So move.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. We're down to Joint Schools Working Committee.
Legislative.
Say again?
Legislative.
Oh, I'm looking at one.
No, I have-
I'm looking at the, yeah, at the computer.
I'm looking at the background report, sorry.
So I think we have, we're all mixed up.
Yeah, the reports are different.
Yeah, let's go with Joint Schools Working Committee.
I'd like to stay on that.
Gary, you want to keep on that?
Yes, I would like to stay on. I would too.
Okay, anybody else wanna?
I would like to, but I'll wait till next year to throw my hat in the ring.
Same with me.
I'd like to serve on that as well, but I'll, I'll be an alternate.
Okay. You can, you can certainly attend the meetings.
Right.
As we all, this has been the best board last year, everyone attended almost all of these meetings. So I'll entertain a motion for the joint board-
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? All right, that passes. And, you know, these are all mixed up, where are we, where does that leave us?
We have Legislative and Public Safety.
Legislative Committee.
We have Wendy and Laura?
I'd like to stay on.
I'd like to stay on.
So move.
So moved?
Second. Second.
Second, motion is seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? All right, and then Public Safety.
I would definitely like to stay on.
Meg, Jack, and Laura, same slate?
So move.
All right, moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? All right, we're making pretty good work, fast work of this. I think we are finished with that. It's time for presentations by the public, am I reading this correctly?
We need to, we need to adopt the 2017 meeting schedule also.
We did that.
We did that, we approved it.